Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Hello and welcome to the June 12 Planning Commission meeting for Half Moon Bay. Can I please get the roll call?
Yes, we'll start with Commissioner Devon.
Here.
Chair Hernandez.
I'm present.
Vice Chair Holt.
Here.
And would like to note that Commissioners Benjamin and Evans would not be able to make it this evening.
So noted, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Do we have any feedback on the -- actually, do we have quorum for -- okay, so we will wait. Yeah, we do.
Commander Holt.
Hey.
Yes, just created.
Do you guys have any comments on the minutes from May 22nd?
I move we approve, May 22nd, 2018, Planning Commission minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So passed. Okay, so this part of the Planning Commission meeting is where we have public comment. For those of you who have an item that is not on the agenda, we would invite you to come forward and speak on it. I have a number of comment cards here. I'd like to go ahead and start with Courtney Pazin, followed by Christina Conklin. And while you figure out how to get the green light working on your microphone, I will press the button until it's solid.
Got it.
Excellent. And because the item's not on the agenda, the great mystery of public meetings in California is that we cannot comment on your comments in particular. If you raise a particular question, we can ask staff to investigate it or follow up, but we're not allowed to respond to your comments. And I know many of you looking at the comments here, it's a theme that's been continued for the last few meetings, so I just wanted to share that with everybody, so please.
I appreciate that. I've never done this before. Can you hear me?
Having a little trouble, so.
Hello?
There we go.
Okay. Wow. Okay. Hi. I've never spoken at a public meeting before, but I live in El Granada, and I've lived on the coast since I was probably about 10. And this whole informal application and proposal for the Dunes, the Dunes Resort and RV Park is very concerning. I know it is to a lot of locals, but I was just doing some research, and I know I can't ask questions, but I'll just put it out there. I noticed that the water rights for some of the land was already sold to the realtor and the developer back in March, I think, of 2017. And I don't know what that means, but I just have a hard time understanding why a local family would be selling all of these water rights to somebody for agricultural land, which, you know, it states in the local coastal program land use plan that the land designated north and south of Young Avenue is to be for single-story resident dwelling. So I'm not sure how this, I mean, I know it's not a formal application yet, but it sounds like the developer has been trying to, you know, do this for quite some time. I don't think he's going to stop. He lives on 11.6 million dollar property up in Los Altos, and his realtor, Steve Weed, you know, owns a lot around this parts. He owns a lot of the water rights to some of the parcels over there. So I'm just really concerned because Dunes is awesome. We love to surf there. We love to go there on the weekends. We don't want to overrun with more tourism. 200 rooms in a hotel, no matter how eco-friendly it is. I've worked in hotels for a large portion of my life, and that is, that's a lot of resources, a lot of garbage, a lot of careless people coming and going. And yeah, it just kind of sucks because land, if anything, that needs to be developed should be for locals, teachers, seniors, low-income housing, you know, things that aren't going to upset all of us. And the land, I mean, the Ritz-Carlton is huge, and that's only on like 14 acres. They're talking about a 41-acre project, and that's, that's pretty significant. I mean, so yeah, I just, I just don't understand why, like, can anyone just submit a formal application even though, like, they know it's not going to fly? Like, or is this actually a project that's, you know, underway in some way that nobody knows about? So, those are my concerns, and I really hope this doesn't happen, and interested in hanging out with anybody who also feels the same way. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Just a point of order. We've heard similar concerns from a process perspective. What is the process? Perhaps at the next Planning Commission meeting, if we could get a short summary of what the process is so the public can be more informed about next steps, participation points, and so forth, I think that would be really helpful. Christina Conklin, followed by Amber Stowe.
Hi. Yeah, that was actually going to be one of my questions, was a process question. So I appreciate the points that the former speaker made, and I, I went out to the site and did a walking tour, having looked at the city's really extensive excellent report on the Poplar Beach bluffs area, which looks at erosion and impacts on that site to the coastal trail that are going to be happening over the coming years, and what changes to mitigate the erosion and, you know, what, very sophisticated thinking and a good report on that site. And I'm going to ask the Planning Commission to ask the city to extend that study to the northern part of the coastal trail because it's a resource that the neighborhoods in the north part of town use very heavily and extensively. And what I found is that there's, there's about 85 feet between the path along Dunes Beach, the Dunes Beach parking lot, and the bluffs. And in some places, it's only 30 feet. And the erosion has two or three significant gullies and some smaller ones. And these are exactly the things that were noted in the, the impact report for the Poplar Beach area. And I think a similar analysis of the Dunes Beach area would really be valuable because if, if, on Poplar Beach, you, if you have space to move the path back. At Dunes Beach, there's a little bit of space to move the path back. And then if there's something built there, you have a hard stop. And people would, that, it would last for a little while. There would be a coastal trail there, and then it would be gone. And I think this is an amenity we all count on as cosiders. So that is something I would like the city to do. And I would also, I have a couple of specific requests, and one is that the, I understand that the proposal for this project was submitted recently. I don't know. Okay. Jill's shaking her head. Okay. When it's submitted, can it be posted on the city's website in a prominent location so that we can find it easily? I've had a very hard time finding the developer's website, but I finally did. I think sunshine is, is good for, in governance, and so that the city, you know, residents can understand what this proposal is would be very important. And hopefully also a link to the developer's website because apparently it has, it has even more of the vision. And also, I'm wondering if, if it's possible for the city to put up past traffic studies that, on Highway 1. I know they've been done by various parts of the government, overtime, the school district, and the city, and probably the county. And I think for local residents to understand the traffic impacts would be really important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Amber Stowe, followed by Mike Palome.
Thank you. I'm actually going to be rereading comments that I made at the May 8 meeting where quorum was not reached, in part due to traffic congestion in Half Moon Bay. The Dunes proposal comes hot on the heels of the Hyatt development, and we have yet to see the impacts of other recent developments in our area, specifically the Best Western on Wavecrest and the Pacific Ridge Tract. In just the seven years I have lived here, traffic in Half Moon Bay has increased from a nuisance on event days like Pumpkin Festival and Dream Machines to snarls and backups every weekend between April and October. It is a level of traffic that can turn a quick drive to the grocery store into a half-hour ordeal, and will make conditions untenable for residents and visitors alike if we add another 400 to 500 cars per day on our roads. That's assuming one car per unit of the hotel and RV park, and that's not adding the new patrons of the Best Western staying right across the street from another 150 patrons at a proposed Hyatt. Half Moon Bay's geography is uniquely unforgiving. We hug the coastline. We effectively have only two roads in and out of town. This would be the second oversized hotel proposed on Highway 1 in less than three months. I grew up in Southern California. I watched our local Planning Commission rubber stamp development after development until the semi-rural town I grew up in became an overcrowded suburb. But my hometown had a pre-existing six-lane highway running by it. We don't have that luxury here. What do you suppose this hotel will do to that stretch and beyond of Cabrillo Highway? Every day at rush hour, traffic grinds to a halt around Strawflower, and the backup extends in all directions, and on weekends spills over to the neighborhoods and into downtown. What is this commission's plan for the extra 500 cars per day going through that same choke point? Is the plan to endlessly widen the highway, or are we going to put in a block-by-block series of stoplights until Half Moon Bay more closely resembles Southern California beach communities like Santa Monica and Malibu, or Northern California communities like Carmel? I'm just wondering what the end game is here. The positive impacts of this development, increased revenue and visibility, are far outweighed by the negative in form of increased traffic, increased strain on our infrastructure, and further overcrowding of our beaches. The Dunes proposal is too much development too soon and too fast, and neglects to take into account the impacts on our roads and residents. Increased traffic congestion is a major concern for San Mateo County voters and the Bay Area at large. How is adding a hotel and convention center going to improve that?
Thank you for your comments. Mike Palome.
First.
Followed by Mike Ferrara.
First, thank you for listening to our concerns. I just basically have two questions. Right now, there's the roughly 47 acres. All that rainwater is absorbed by the ground. If this project goes through, how does this developer plan dispose of the storm drain? Where's this water going to go? And second, if you've got all these 183, I think that's the number, I'm not sure, of the RVs, and you've got the resort, you've got laundry, you've got showers, you've got the sewage, is that going to overload our sewage disposal in addition to all the other projects you people have on the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you for your succinct comments. Former Mayor Mike Farrar.
Good evening, Chair Hernandez and Commissioners. This project that's being proposed for Dune Beach is wildly inconsistent with what we have in our LCP for that area, not even close. So very obviously, it would have to require an amendment to our LCP. And I guess I'm really curious about at what point do the people get to decide whether they want to change their own LCP? I think that if that question were put to the people, you'd get a resounding no. I do not know where the law is relative to the council or the Planning Commission as to what their ability to say no is, but I think you can certainly take it from the speakers that come here, from what's on the local blogs, et cetera, et cetera. There's not many fans for this thing here or in the midcoast. And frankly, the sooner we get this golem off our backs, the better. And so I'm just advocating that we take some steps to put an end to this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Roy Salumi. Hopefully I got your name right.
Yeah, it's, it's been mangled many times before. I hope the commission and the public in general will join me in extending sympathy to Commissioner Benjamin and his family on the passing of his mother. And he's absent because he's attending to Family Matters, so I'm, I'm sure you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments regarding Commissioner Benjamin. We share your sentiment. Those of you who have any other public comments, if you haven't filled out a green card, this is your opportunity. Not seeing anybody rushing to the podium, I will go ahead and close public comment. And we will move to, yes, please.
Just while we still have all these folks in the room, I, I would like to, just because we're staff and we can respond a little bit to what we heard tonight. First of all, Ms. Conklin, I know you left me a message today, and I didn't get back to you because it's Planning Commission Day, and I struggle, so I apologize. And I'm happy to talk to you later this week. We do intend to post the application on the website. We don't have one yet. We had a preliminary submittal. So again, I just want to note that, and that's why we're not spending a lot of staff time doing things like that at this point. However, one thing we did do is on the city's website, hmbcity.org, there's a place where you can sign up to be on different email lists. And we did set up an email list for both the Hyatt proposal, as well as the potentially pending Surf Dunes proposal. So if you haven't already done that, that's something you can do. And we will be using, we really like to have these lists. They're really helpful for us. The other thing that we do is when we have key milestones and projects, we put them out in our e-news, and our Public Information Officer also posts the information on Nextdoor because our experience with your community is that you use that a lot. So if there's any other tools like that that you want to let me know about later on over the next week or so, please do. And that was, that was just a couple of things I, I thought I could pop in the record while you're here. Thank you.
Yes, one second. So thank you, Jill. And I would like to encourage everybody to sign up for the email to city website. It has been a great source of transparency and activities, and I'd like to commend city staff for their work in doing what they can to make things as apparent to the public. Commissioner. Thank you very much. Jill, just curious, do you have any sense of a general timeline on when a full application might be submitted?
I expect it this month, but there was a, a date that we were, that has passed when I thought it was going to land on the counter. So I don't have a new date. I'll let you know if there's a target date that, that I can share, but I would expect it within the next few weeks.
Thank you. So we will reclose public comment, and, ma'am, you may speak. Please go ahead and.
All right.
Make sure the microphone's turned on.
I haven't finished it yet. No. Okay, there we go. Yes, I've spoken before. Rosalynn Ramsey, and I live in Miramar. And I worked on the Slow Growth Initiative way back when, I don't know, in the 80s. Which, which proposition was that? Yes. And so sometimes I wonder, I mean, so I've lived here for over 40 years, and this place is still pretty cool. It's, it hasn't grown too fast, and it's a beautiful place for the visitors to come to and for the people who live here. And we want to attract people. Isn't that what everybody wants to do, is attract visitors to come? But why would we fill up the corridor with hotel after hotel when that's not going to serve the visitors, and it's not going to serve us? Half Moon Bay is very, very unique. It's a very, very unique, people come from all over the world to live here. Visitors come from all over the world to live, to visit here. Now you might say, okay, well, we need more places for those visitors to stay. Do, do we really need more places for those visitors to stay? With things like Airbnb, where local residents can make money, and because it's spread out over the whole community, and the community is the one that ends up benefiting, why not encourage that kind of slow growth as far as visitors come, rather than these big, what do we call it? A big thing, okay? So I also remember quite a while back, another person or another entity wanting to build in that area, and, and they didn't get to do it. So what makes it okay for them to build now if everybody, if it got shut down many years ago? I think it was, what, 10 or 15 years ago? Does anybody remember that? So that area is beautiful. That area is a very beautiful picturesque. You can see the ocean from the highway driving down there. And I just want to say that instead of, I don't know what our motivation is. Is it tax dollars? Is that what we're trying to do? Is we're trying to get more tax dollars for Half Moon Bay? I'm not sure what, why we would want, why would we want this? Why would you guys want to allow this to happen in our town? Maybe you guys will answer that later. Anyway, I just want to put my two cents in that I lived here before there were any stoplights on Highway 1 between Princeton and Half Moon Bay. There was none. There was a blinking light at, I think, Surfers Beach, and there was a blinking light at, at Princeton where the harbor is. And now there's stoplights, and that's okay. That has to happen. But I do get concerned about the gridlock that's going to happen here. I mean, it's already kind of happening. Anyway, thank you very much for your time, my time. Your time.
Thank you for your comments, and I think you've hit upon many of the thorny issues that we have to deal with as your Planning Commission. So with that, I'm going to close public comment. And we're going to move on to Planning Commission business, third attempt to do so. So the first item we have is a capital improvement for fiscal year 2018, 2019. And John, would you like to introduce yourself to the public and take it away for us, please?
Sure, thanks. John Dowdy, I'm your Public Works Director for the City of Half Moon Bay. Pleased to be here. It's been a little while since I've been at the Planning Commission, so I hope you've appreciated what we left you in good hands, I think, with Jill, but it's nice to be here. Click. I don't have a clicker, so I have the weird clicker. So there are a lot of slides, and Jill's going to kill me, but I'll try to work through these pretty quickly and then come back to anything that you wish to, to hit upon. What I want to do is give you just a really quick overview of what the CIP is, and then detail out the 2018-19 project list. So tonight, this is a role that the state legislature has set as the Planning Commission's role, which is to review the list of projects within the fiscal year to come, and to determine that those projects are consistent with the general plan. Now, we all recognize we're in the process of a general plan update, an LCLUP update, and so this clearly is a, is somewhat a challenging time to be, to be trying to deal with the consistency issues. But here we are, and this is an obligation that we have to deal with. So basically, the CIP is primarily sort of as a planning document as well as a financial document, and ultimately, it's designed to allow the community, city council, to prioritize various projects, programs, and with the available funding that they have. Thank you. So what we're looking at today are the projects that have been identified for the capital budget, which is year one of the capital improvement program. The capital improvement program is a five-year program, year one being the budgeted year, year two, three, and four, five being the years that are looked at in terms of budgeting, but they are not absolute projects. Those will come back and whatever. Those will come back, and whatever was listed in year two, and also new projects identified will then become the new rolling first year or capital budget next year. So it's a constant readjusting up to a five-year plan. Generally, these are pretty fairly large in size in this community, large in size, high value. We've put at $30,000, so in other communities, that might be a lot higher number. But here, we're looking at basically $30,000 as our threshold point that we look at. And these are all sort of non-recurring and permanent in nature, so a one-time repair, fix doesn't necessarily equate to a capital because it's not actually investing new and creating new capital. So this went before the city council as part of two different study sessions, including the May 1st large study session, and followed up on May 15th to the council. And these were basically the directions that they gave to us in terms of looking at identifying what's going on. I think the two big issues there that I point out are to try to look at slightly less robust list of big projects. We've been unable to deliver on the projects because we've been way too... Well, we've accepted and identified way too many projects, more than what we can legitimately deliver on. I'm concerned, once again, that we did exactly the same thing in 2018-19, but there are so... There continue to be so many needs and wants and great projects, and also funding that we've been successful at obtaining, at grants and such, that it makes it difficult to narrow down the list sometimes. The other part of this was to integrate smaller projects, smaller improvement projects, particularly to parks and facilities, to be implemented through our maintenance division. And so that was some added, basically, maintenance, public works projects. Thank you. So the CIP is broken into various components of basically the functional areas, and so this will just work through a series of these. I'm hoping not to spend a great deal of time going through each one of these, but for the purposes of your review, you can take a look at these and deal with it. The drainage projects primarily roll from our storm drain master plan implementation, which then kind of equate down to identifying projects. So the Seymour Ditch Erosion Project was completed, the temporary repair this year, and now we're moving forward into the permanent repair. This is going to be a significant effort to get through the permitting processes, to look at areas to store the water, to not just push the water in through the ditch as fast and as quickly as we possibly can, which will increase and continue with the incising that's happening there and the deterioration. So we're looking upstream, and that's a large project. Notably, I think the questions in terms of the implementation side is we're focusing next year on Highway One and Kelly Avenue, diverting storm water that's coming down Highway One, and now heading down Kelly Avenue and flooding the yards and front yards of a lot of houses down Kelly. And this would divert along Shoreline Station, along Highway One, in open areas and pipe to deal with also treatment of that water as well as slowing it down and working through. And then we've got a pretty issue with Pullman Court and Roosevelt Ditch, and looking at trying to deal with existing wall that's there that's collapsing. There's also a manhole that's there for the sewer that's being threatened, and then looking at how do we deal with some of the localized flooding there. This will require some pretty significant environmental review and effort there, and whether this can be done in the coming year is a question. We'll do what we can do and deal with that. Thank you. So from economic development, general plan, near an LCLUP, near and dear to your hearts, we will be working on completing the electric vehicle charging stations. We'll add an additional one at City Hall. There'll be one at the library, the new library will have a new EV charging station, and there'll be one at the Adcock Center as well. So there's three partially funded by grants that we went after and dealt with, but those are coming. And then we'll continue to work on various wayfinding and entryway signs. From an operational improvement side, we're going to be implementing, we've contracted now with the Enterprise Resource Planning Consultant Contractor to develop the program and to review and to go through that process. That's going to be a couple of years in the making. That also is going to integrate in land use component to that, meaning for permitting software for the public works permits, encroachment permits, all those things to be included. And then we're also looking seriously at this year, moving forward on the GIS implementation. It's high time. And with the LCLUP general plan update, and along with all our other utilities and work that we're dealing with, we have to deal with integrating GIS more fully. So parks, parks is a high priority with the council and I think within the community. Jill and you and the Parks and Rec Commission have been working vigilantly on getting the Parks Master Plan moving forward. That's now in really good standing. We're working on now kicking off with the environmental work, and out of that will come a number of projects through the years. This year, this coming year, we're looking at several things to try to jump ahead of some of the bigger projects, and those are the red items, and those are some of the smaller projects. And then you've got a series of sort of master planning efforts that will occur at Carter Park with the Smith Field, the Train Depot, and Johnston House, as well as this site here from 555 Kelly out and back to here to look at what we... How do we better plan for this whole site and facility area? So that's coming soon. So this just reflects the implementation on the Parks Master Plan and moving forward, and so that's there. From public facilities, a big effort that we're dealing with is that we are behind in our... I shouldn't say that openly, but we are behind in completing and assessing our ADA conformance for all our public buildings, our public streets, parks, parking lots, all of those things. So we actually had our kickoff meeting today with the consultant. There'll be a public outreach process associated with that, and then we'll be developing and working through the transition plan. The big issue here is to integrate in various components of that transition plan into our planning for street improvements, crosswalk improvements, facilities, all of those things, and to prioritize those projects along with basically getting ADA compliance there. One of the things that we're also focused on, and this comes with both the risk management side as well as from ADA perspective accessibility, is sidewalks. And we completed this last year, a street tree survey, looking at virtually all the street, the trees that are located within the rights of way, the streets and the rights of way of the city, as well as some other grove areas that the city owns. And so now that's being matched up with the sidewalk survey that was done the preceding year, and matching up around with that. And then also working through with the various utilities that also have boxes and vaults that are creating problems. So this is a significant issue. We're going to try to, I think, narrow down this list a bit to start with, get some project work done, get some sidewalks replaced and deal with it that are the most needed and deal with that. We're going to be looking at trimming and pruning the Main Street trees. This continues to be a question that comes up from the businesses there. This is something that's needed. This is about an every-five-year project, and we're also going to be working as a result of that tree survey on a grid-based pruning cycle. So we'll be moving to that. Thanks. Sewer projects, this is one of those odd things that when I first came to work here, it was unclear what we did in sewer or whether we even had a sewer system. Yes, we do. We have a sewer collection system. We have 35 miles of sewer, 37 miles of sewer collection system. We do a lot of work in our sewer collection system. It's an expensive proposition. Most of you here in the... Many of you at least here are within the city limits and pay your sewer bills. Thank you. And that's what pays for these improvements and things. And so we're going to be working on a variety of things out there. And one of the big projects is something we haven't yet taken up with the neighbors, but on Lauren Lane near Kehoe, there is, I think, eight or nine houses that have a sewer main that runs in the backyards, in their backyards, which have to be replaced. So this is going to be a significant undertaking, just in the sheer pain and suffering that will be with landscaping that exists, walls, fences, and it's going to have to be an open trench going in to remove this pipe. So that's just something that we're looking forward to. Ocean Colony is going to see their entire pump station and force main replaced. It's time to replace those. And then also, we're looking at some other work for the other pump stations. So we operate three pump stations and force mains in the city as well in the collection system. And then, street projects, the great news is the council is scheduled next week to award the contract for a number of street improvement projects, including Magnolia between Main Street and Highway One, which has been, I know, desired, also part of Church Street, a variety of other places and pieces of property. Miramonte's Point, finish up the area from the Canyatta Mobile Home Park, back to Highway One. So some good improvements there. We're going to look at how do we sort of work through additional improvements as part of the ADA kind of transition plan and dealing with those things, and go from there. And then this year, we will finish up the pavement projects and then look at what should be coming next. We anticipate working on a benefit assessment district for Belleville Boulevard. We're also going to be working on a community outreach process and potential even benefit assessment district consideration for Poplar Street to leverage an $1 million-plus grant that we received to do a complete streets project from Main Street down to Railroad. So that's a very exciting project, and we're going to try to link that project with the Gateways, Poplar Gateways project. We're looking at many of the same interests, same neighbors, same issues to some extent, and the access and the area for Poplar Beach seem to make a lot of sense. So we're going to try to tie those together as much as possible. The trail projects, we received a grant to do work from Marotta Road to the ultimate, basically, extension of where the county is planning to finish up and extend the trail, the Class 1 trail on the east side of Highway One, so in the north part of the area, so that would connect in from the area there at Frenchman's and along there. One of the high priority items that was identified in the draft Ped Bike Master Plan was centered around that east side pathway and trail, so this was a grant that we recently received, and this will be the piece of it, looking at continuing the pieces. And then the Highway One North project will be a big piece of this. The major piece that we don't have funding for is the bridge and the extension basically from Frenchman's Road over to Rousseau Français and that bridge across there. So that's going to be a major undertaking to deal with and to try to fund that, but we're working there. And then again, we're starting, we're heading to a kickoff meeting in the very near future with the environmental review. Contract was awarded by the council last week, so moving forward with that. And ultimately, we're looking at a variety of things with regard to the coastal bluff, particularly Poplar. We're looking at improving the access and safety of access down Poplar, at the Poplar Access down to the beach. We think we need to move that forward and address that right away. I think it's just difficult for a lot of people to get down there. And ultimately, the Gateways Master Plan will be a significant undertaking, which will address where should we potentially relocate and move the trail in when, as erosion occurs and continues to occur, and any number of things that we're looking at out there in terms of potentially even relocating the parking lot away from erosion, looking at changing how we approach things out there in many ways. Thanks. So there are a few new projects. Those are listed here. I think one that's pretty exciting for the community has been the permanent restrooms at Ocean View Park. That's been something that's been desired for a long time, and the existing facilities, it's a lot to be desired there. So we're working on that. And then in this plan, and it probably means very little to most folks, but ultimately, what this shows is that we shifted a lot of projects and delayed some projects and deferred some projects. I think notably, you'll see some of the Smith Field projects were rolled into the Smith Field, basically, master plan implementation. So it really pushes back to... We were starting to look at some very specific projects that really needed to be addressed in a context of a bigger picture planning effort this coming year to look at, you know, how do you... You don't want to put in a new paved parking lot and then take out a piece of that parking lot to put in a water line, for example, or to build something else and do that. So we want to be planning and thinking through these things. Thanks. And then ultimately, it is good to know the school district is looking to begin work on Building C reconstruction, so we'll have a better idea of where we land with the parking lot expansion and where the modulators are there at Cunha, and so that's now postponed into 1920 to allow that to move forward. The community garden, someone may ask about what we've decided to do on that, because it was... It came out very clearly throughout the process of the Parks Master Plan, that we should just be looking at that more contextually with each park rather than trying to define a community garden site, but we should be looking at multiple, perhaps, community garden sites within existing parks and existing lands that we own. Thanks. So tonight, again, we are asking the planning commission to adopt a resolution finding that the projects are consistent with the general plan. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. I read the staff report. I'd like to commend you for the detail and the planning that's gone into this, and I know you've addressed a lot of the issues that people are constantly raising regarding infrastructure, sewage, transportation, and circulation. So also, in the staff report, I just want to call out the fact that the city has raised over $3 million in external funding from grants for some of these projects in the budget. That's not an easy thing to do, so I just want to say thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
John, I have just one. Any of these projects that we've seen here likely to come back to the planning commission for review or modification?
Certainly, the master plans, any of the subsequent master plans, particularly the Parks Master Plans, will have... You'll have a role in reviewing those and helping with the prioritization along with Parks and Rec Commission. So that's sort of clearly a dual role. The Highway One North is going to require a CDP and environmental review. You'll be seeing that in the coming months, as an example. So there's any number of projects that will be coming back to you that are requiring CDPs. Some of these are replacements and not, but many of these will require coastal development permits and environmental review.
One of the things we have to do is find this consistent with the general plan, which also includes a circulation element that was approved not too long ago. There are a lot of projects here that address transportation, bike access, trails, so I find generally it's pretty consistent. The question that I have is regard to some of the projects. We have visual resources on the bluff tops, and some of the projects, in a general way, talk about improvements on the bluff tops, improvements on Smith Field, including fencing. Is it your expectation that you're not going to make any changes to the current visual resources? You're not going to put up obstructive fencing? You're not going to block the view to the ocean with these projects? You're not going to block the view to the ocean with these projects?
Our intention is not to, and for the most part, we're looking to repair, replace existing fencing. The only area that we've been looking at, and any fencing that we're looking at, is the open split rail friendly fencing. But the only areas that we may look at, some expanded use, is trying to use some of that to deter the cut-across traffic that we're getting that's ruining the bluff top. I would, you know, caution folks, or at least encourage them to look at the, the report that was done and from NCE, Nichols Consulting Engineering, about the implications of all of the use of the bluff top and the walking. That's the only area that we're looking at, but very, very limited in that regard. What we're really looking at is the Gateways Master Plan to really focus on what that looks like and, and looking at the visual resources and, and going through a community process with that, so that there's going to be no major, major activities occurring up in Poplar particularly until that plan is done and approved and environmental completed.
Very good. So the only other, I guess, comment I have, and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Holt, is as we do these minor maintenance projects, some of which may not require a CDP, the feedback I've gotten from the community and some of the things I've seen is that some of the placement of items like trash, which is, trash cans are much needed, but the compacters contribute to a feeling of clutter. Some of the signage that we're proposing, we've already got over 50 signs along Poplar Beach in that area. Just as we look at this, maybe step back a little and look at how does this all fit together? What's the overall impact from a visual resource perspective? We kind of know where the beach is. I'm not sure we need signs on the beach telling us how to get there. So just, just a general concern that I have.
I, I think that this, the council's clearly established that community and outreach and communication is, continues to be a critical piece of this. And I think that clearly, in some respects, we could have done a better job, and we'll continue to work on, and on improving those efforts.
You got garbage cans out quickly, so thank you for that.
Hey, you know, I, I, last summer, last summer was this, was a difficult summer. I, I got more phone calls, emails, and, and wonderful other text messages about trash piling up at Poplar Beach. It was beyond painful all last summer, so. One, I'm hoping that it's not as hot, and two, I hope these take care of some of the problem.
Thank you. Brian? Okay. Are there any, do you have any public comments on this? I didn't see any comment cards. If you do want to speak about the capital improvement budget, this is your chance. Not seeing anybody rushing to the podium. I will close public comment and turn it back over to Commissioner Holt.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of general comments. One, I think this is great. I really appreciate the organization. Part of what I appreciate, having been served on the Parks and Recreation Commission and now on the Planning Commission, sort of seeing the evolution of coming to the city and sort of some haphazard projects that would come forward and really seeing things bundled together and sort of implementation of some of the, the planning efforts, the parks' master plan, the trails' master plan, and really seeing how that, that implementation is going forward. Also, really appreciate the city's efforts to secure grant funding. I know grant funds are kind of a, you know, careful what you wish for sort of thing. You get more money, you have to have staff to actually manage those and implement them. But would just like to give a plug for last Tuesday, the state of California passed Prop. 68. San Mateo County voted that in, close to 70 percent, so there's a lot of support for that. That's funding that goes directly to parks and water improvement projects. A lot of significant funding for coastal erosion, climate change, parks improvements. So really, a good opportunity for the city to position themselves to secure some state funding to invest in, into our local parks here, and, and I hope our local, our state parks will also be investing funds here. So I'm really happy to see a lot of the investments in parks and trails. That's something that's a pet issue of mine, and, and really appreciate this. So thank you, John.
Great. Thank you. So, any other comments left? All right, can I get a motion?
I would move to adopt a resolution with findings that the proposed fiscal year 2018, 2019 capital projects as contained in the city's five-year capital improvement program are consistent with the city's general plan.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Can we get a voice vote? Or a roll call vote?
Yes. Okay. Vote for Commissioner Devon.
Yes.
For Vice Chair Holt.
Yes.
And vote for Chair Hernandez.
Yes. Motion passes three zero. Okay, moving right along. Next item on the agenda. We have proposed amendments to city ordinance regulating accessory dwelling units. Jill, do you have a staff report?
We do. Good evening. Sarah Clark, our Assistant City Attorney, is with me tonight again. This is our, our third outing with the Planning Commission on working towards a draft accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And that was also preceded by a kickoff presentation from San Mateo County. So we've been working on this all spring. And tonight, we're going to ask for careful consideration, deliberation, and recommendation from the Planning Commission to the city council regarding this draft ordinance. I recognize some folks who have been coming along with us. There was a study session back in March, and we had a first draft ordinance in April. I'll try to highlight a few of the things that were discussed in the past, but for the most part, we're, we're really trying to go forward into what is intended in, in this draft ordinance and based on public input, based on Planning Commission direction, and based on coordination with Coastal Commission staff. This is the agenda for the presentation, and we'll note that this is a little bit different than your last two study sessions. Your public comment tonight is a public hearing. The ordinance was noticed as a public hearing in the Hafnem Bay Review, and we have followed all those procedures for, for moving through this, this particular step. So background, on March 13th, we had a staff report that really highlighted key policy issues for updating the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And on April 25th, we looked at a first draft ordinance, which we fully expected to get a range of input, and, and we certainly did. So, and, and here we are now. So we just remind the group that one of the, the primary reasons why we're doing this is it, from the local perspective, is this is a city council priority. But from a policy perspective on a larger scale, state law has gone well past where our ordinance is sitting, and we are obligated to update our ordinance to comply with state law and also within the realm of Coastal Commission guidance. So that's threading a needle a little bit, and we've, we've tried to do that carefully, and we, again, look forward to your, your input on that. But state law has really kicked in in January 1st, 2017, so it's been on the books for a little while. And then Coastal Commission, we'll talk about their guidance in a second here, but they issued two guidance documents in 2017, the second of which was in November. And frankly, I found that one to be pretty helpful. So we've been relying on those things. State law is directly applicable to every jurisdiction in the state. Unless they adopt their own ordinance, it will supersede any other jurisdiction's ordinance. Now, we're in the coastal zone, and the coastal zone has some exceptions to that. But they're limited, so we, we are mindful of that. But in a nutshell, the state law updates for ADU ordinances were for expedited review, requiring no new utility connections for accessory dwelling units, which I, you're all here, so I'm assuming you all know what these are. They can be referred to as second units, granny flats, and au pair space, et cetera, et cetera. We're, we're going to stick with ADU accessory dwelling unit because that is how they're specifically defined. Also, I feel bad because we're not, we're not showing the sort of context as a whole for these. That was back in, I think, February that we did that, and this is a, a dry ordinance discussion. State law won't allow for us to have a size limit on ADUs that are wholly within, which is, means that they're wholly within existing development, such as you have a house and maybe you do a tenant improvement, you change the configuration of the house to partition a portion of it, a bedroom or two, and, and convert one of the bedrooms to a kitchen, for example, and provide an exterior entrance to it. They, they're not allowing us to limit the size of that. And also, they have directed, except, or reductions in parking requirements. We do have some discretion, and we'll, you'll note that there's parts of our staff report that indicate where that's been allowed, and that's really where we've focused most of our time on our policy discussion, where we, where we can have some discretion. And those things are with various zoning standards that are objective. They cannot be subjective. We can't do subjective design review on accessory dwelling units. And they also have to be consistent with the coastal act and our local coastal program. Coastal Commission guidance is, is pretty specifically said, yeah, update your ordinances, coastal cities. You, you do need to do this and align with state law. That said, they acknowledge local control and the unique characteristics of different coastal communities insofar as codes and ordinances that are especially careful with coastal resources, visual resources, and coastal access, those primary tenants of, of the coastal act. And Coastal Commission guidance also encouraged utilization of waivers, which we don't have that tool in our code at this time, or exemptions. And we, we were looking at those when appropriate, and they are not always, always appropriate. We'll show where we cut that and see, see what you think about that. Now, in April, you had a, that draft ordinance, and the next few slides here, I'm really going to focus on what Sarah did with her really hard work coding after we visited Coastal Commission staff, reviewed your input, and went back through community comments. And we, we have this revised draft that we believe is reflective of, of your April meeting. It also incorporates Coastal Commission staff input, and we'll, we'll highlight some sections where, where they were really helpful for us. We had some open-ended questions. And in particular, clarifying the review process and some limits for allowances in PUDs and reserve districts. We know those two things were of concern from Planning Commission input, as well as some of our public comment at the last meeting. So, I wanted to start with the review process. The kind of bold italics is what has changed since what you saw last time. With the wholly within, we got clarification from the Coastal Commission. If, if someone's going to have an ADU and it's wholly within existing living space, so for example, that house example, they would consider that to be exempt because they don't, they did not consider that it would be actually meeting the definition of development. That got parsed against something that came up in your meeting, which was, well, what about the change of intensity of use? Because that is a component of the coastal act's definition of development, and that, that came out of, Commissioner Benjamin asked about that. So that was a, a key topic with our Coastal Commission colleagues, and their advice was if it's really about a change of use of the structure type. So for example, a garage conversion. The garage is not habitable space. If the intent is to change from a garage to a ADU, that's allowed, but it would need to have an administrative coastal development permit. And if she's going to help me?
There's a nuance there, in that it could receive an administrative CDP. It also may qualify for an exemption, which we'll, I believe you'll talk about in a second.
I don't know if I do.
Okay. There, there's also exemptions built into the code for small additions to existing single-family residences and other structures. And so it's possible that a wholly within ADU, depending on the facts and circumstances, could also require or qualify for an exemption.
As, as long as we're not wholeheartedly changing the use of the space. Okay. So then, last time, we talked to you about new development ADUs as well. So this is where the detached unit, so the cottage in the backyard, we believe we need to process an administrative coastal development permit. That is what we actually have been doing, although we've clarified the administrative CDP review process. And Coastal Commission staff was, was comfortable with that. Now, another kind of new development ADU is where you'd have an addition, and say it was a pop-out on the, the back of a single-family home. Part of the unit is included in existing living space, and part of it could be in new living space. So it's kind of a combo of within and an addition. We talked to you last time about options for that, and where we landed is matching what the city does now for additions to single-family homes. If the addition is equivalent to 10% or more of the existing floor area, then we do require a CDP. If it's less than that, it is exempt. So we, we would suggest just carrying the same threshold, threshold forward for consistency and our practice, and I personally am very comfortable with this. And if you have questions on that one, let us know. It could be that we may be able to raise that threshold a little bit after the LCP update. That is a, that's a low bar, so we'll, we'll talk about that in another context. Now, these two things are clarifications and really helpful input for a little bit from our Coastal Commission folks as well. We had missed a little bit of coding that is very important. Many of the houses in town already have a coastal development permit. The coastal development permit was issued when they were constructed. So this is something we already do. It just escaped my notice because it's part of our natural practice. When we get an application on a lot with a single-family home, we're going to go look at its permit history and see what was already done, if there's any special conditions that would limit an addition, any, anything special about the history. So Sarah, put this in the code. We, we absolutely need to go and look and see if there's anything about past permits that would affect the proposal. And then, the other one, state law had quite a bit of options for if, if you were going to allow the streamlining for the ADU, but let's say it's a lot where it's a, it's an undeveloped lot, and the proposal is for a new single-family home and an ADU. Do you streamline the ADU and not the single-family home? Do you, how do you sequence them, et cetera, et cetera? We think it's most appropriate to consider them as a whole and to avoid piecemealing, and that's what we're recommending. And we don't think this is contrary really to the direction for expediting per state law because this application already requires a coastal development permit for the other portion of it. And frankly, all, in, in most of these cases, most, just about all of the development would be new, new development. Okay. Now, last, let's see here. I think the most important thing to note here is the existing ordinance that you have on the books now allows accessory dwelling units in all of the R zones, so the R1, 2, and 3, as well as the mixed-use commercial zoning districts. And the, so the, the C on all of those is commercial. The first one is downtown. The next one is commercial residential. VS is for visitor-serving, and the CG is commercial general. We're not proposing any changes to that. That's, that's consistently moving forward with this ordinance. Now, what we are proposing, based on really the, the direction of state law, and I, it's written about in about in quite a bit of detail in our staff report, is allowing accessory dwelling units, specifically because it's not called out now in the code, in other neighborhoods, so that developed neighborhoods. And so we do have three that have PUD or PUDX zoning. Ocean Colony, which is in our land use plan as the Hafen Bay Country Club PUD, is a fully built-out, just about every lot has been built except for a couple now. Residential neighborhood with single-family development. It may be that its HOA doesn't allow ADUs, and so then that's going to remain the truth for that area. But we believe to be consistent with state law, we have to treat all the neighborhoods the same. Jenna Lane is in the Matucci PUD, and I think there's about one or two lots that haven't been entitled yet, but it's pretty much built out. And then Pacific Ridge, which in your LUP is Dykstra Ranch, and actually, in the zoning code, it has the PUDX designation. So, when we saw you in April, we were talking about the PUDs, and there was concern that it was too broad and that it could allow for an accessory dwelling unit application to be expedited on a lot in a PUD that had not been planned yet. Our PUDs, the ones that haven't been developed, just about all of them require a specific plan for the entire consideration of that development. We didn't intend to end-run that at all. We assumed that was still in place. But instead of addressing it that way, we just called out the PUDs that this would be applicable to. So, curious about your feedback. The other one is urban and open space reserve. We changed the way this was addressed. There are quite a few urban and open space reserve parcels in town that have a single-family house on them. In fact, there's quite a few that are non-conforming in lot size. And the non-conforming regulations have been, how to say? They're a bit troublesome to implement. There's some vagueness. There's actually, through our research, I've found a wide range of past practice in how permits were issued for additions to them. And so our recommendation here is to allow an ADU on one of these properties only if it already has a single-family home, not as a way to develop a lot that doesn't have any, anything on it yet. And the reason why is, and most of these lots are non-conforming, and the intent of non-conforming regulations is really to phase out what's there. And so we don't want to allow too much, and yet we do want to be consistently fair about allowing for upgrading of the property and remodeling and that kind of thing, and it's really been a challenge. So, you will notice that that specific language about only if there's already an existing single-family home, not just a proposed one, which is distinct from the other zones, and that we've put in an FAR cap. Those lots can be significantly larger than your R1 lots, and so we're trying to maintain consistency in terms of how big can your house be, and at the same time, not deferring out to an R1, because our FAR is 50%. So if you had a standard lot of 6,000 square feet, you could have a 3,000-square-foot house in an R1 area. But if we're out in these reserve areas, the lots can be, although they're non-conforming, they might still be over an acre. And a half, a .5 FAR is not an appropriate tool for that. So, there was quite a bit of method to what we intended to do. It is based on case studies, you know, things that have challenged us in the past of trying to help applicants do the right thing on these properties. And we were comfortable with this recommendation. I would really like to have this code cleared up. This would help staff. Okay, parking. We talked about parking quite a bit last time. The key here is, the state law direction is that every property within a half-mile of a transit stop won't need to provide the parking space. And because of, you heard about our unique geography during public comment tonight, that's exactly correct. And with a bus stop along Highway 1, next to every single neighborhood, almost every parcel in town is within a half-mile radius of a transit stop. And that would mean if we took that straight up off of the state law guidance for this, we wouldn't require any parking for any of these ADUs. We're concerned about that, and we've talked about that. And we are allowed to deviate from those specific state law if there is a nexus to our Coastal Act, as well as our LCP. And in this case, we think there is a connection in parking-impacted neighborhoods that are near the beach. We know they get pretty crowded on a sunny day. So, we shared with you a map last time, and this time, we actually put in the codes and boundaries. I've actually changed my mind about one of these over the weekend. I've been spending a lot of time on my bike tooling around these neighborhoods, just to see how it's functioning. Of course, this last weekend was really windy, and we didn't have a lot of folks at the beach like we do on some other weekends. That said, I also get phone calls about, from neighbors after a really sunny weekend, telling me how dreadful it is to live on their street because of all the beach parking. So, that is why this first cut here, we talked about last time and then have revised it a little bit. There are four neighborhoods where we're proposing to maintain the requirement for that parking place, because if you don't require the parking place, the car associated with the household living in the ADU will be on the street. And so that's where we feel like we may have an impact to our coastal access. So I can run through what's proposed here, and then I do want to share a little bit of a revision of a recommendation. On the north end of the map is really the entire neighborhood of Miramar within the city's limits. Miramar has parking permits. It's known to have a fairly intense amount of parking going on. I would maintain that recommendation. Down where you see that L, those two blue lines in Casa Del Mar, one of the lines is on Wave, and the other is on Pillar Citos. I am not as concerned about the entire span of either of those streets as I am about when we go farther south, Kelly, for example. We know folks park on Wave and Pillar Citos near the corner where those two meet, and there's a walkway out to the coastal trail in that area. I don't get very many complaints from the neighborhood. We do see folks parking along Wave in this kind of an open-space area on the north side of the street. But I would suggest either eliminating this or probably reducing it, that I think the community, you guys are the experts on your neighborhoods, so I'm expecting a little surgical precision to come out of community input. Going south, Alsace-Lorraine and Arleta Park are mapped together. That blob includes both sides of Kelly Avenue from Valboa to Pillar Citos, and then Poplar from, I think it's Pacific, up to Third, and maybe that's going too far east. But boy, do we get a lot of phone calls about Poplar on a hot day. And then the, so those are the corridors, but then the bulk of it is Railroad Avenue to the west, Kelly north, and then Potter. And then unfortunately, the street doesn't go through nicely, so that's where that little bump is. And it's Alsace-Lorraine to First, where it transitions there. I've had phone calls about that entire north area from Kelly all the way down to Valdez, between Poplar and Railroad, and I have seen that. I don't know what kind of input we'll get about that, but I just have anecdotal, so I was comfortable with that recommendation. I'm interested in any and all feedback, though, on these. But I would back off my recommendation on Casa Del Mar. Short-term rentals. So I do want to note, it's a good point to do this. We have received three comment letters on the ADU ordinance. Two of them were in your packet. One was expressing great concern about this ordinance and also the relationship to short-term rentals. We received a very supportive letter from Seacrest School that was also in your packet. And then just this afternoon, we received email correspondence from Timothy Pond, who has spoken at quite a few of your study sessions, and he is sorry that he couldn't come tonight. So we did want to make sure that you, and maybe when you take public comment, you'll spend a minute to take a look at this new correspondence that you haven't had a chance to see yet. That said, Timothy's input, as well as the other gentleman's relating to short-term rentals, and input that we received from some of the folks who are here tonight at the April session, affected the recommendation that is in the draft ordinance. And we also offer some other considerations, and we've done additional thinking about this. So we know that it's still an area of interest. What you see in the draft is a grandfathering, basically, of any existing short-term rental that is operating out of an accessory dwelling unit in compliance with paying the city's transient occupancy tax, which is really our only tool right now in advance of a future ordinance, which will have some land use controls. We looked through our records. It's hard to know exactly what we see, because we're combing the websites and looking at pictures, and we can't always tell the configurations of different sites. I think there's fewer than 10 of these conditions. So, it's for having the ADU being used as a short-term rental. What we were seeing mostly was whole-house short-term rentals in our study. But, so, grandfathering a small number is not a huge concern. Why we are proposing, and why we proposed in April to not allow ADUs to be used as short-term rentals comes back to the purpose of the ordinance. The intent is to provide affordable housing, and that is the whole, just why the state did this law and why we're trying to do this. From a county perspective, the emphasis has been on affordability by design, really studying all the different cities' processes. In San Mateo County, there's 20 of us plus the county, so the 21 jurisdictions locally, how much it costs to process an application for an EDU through each jurisdiction, how long it takes, what kind of hearings, what kind of review does it go through. And to, the county's really been supportive with tools. They actually have an online tool for estimating what it would cost to build one of them. And so, it's that emphasis. 13 of the 21 jurisdictions do not allow using ADUs for short-term rentals. The others allow them to some extent, some much more generously than others. I have not studied them all to the nth degree. So, the bottom line here is, it's best practice to not allow it, but that said, we're also in the coastal zone, and so, and we also really appreciate the kind of other consequence of allowing an STR in an ADU as supporting income and helping affordable, housing affordability for the main unit for the homeowner. So, there's a lot of nuance to whether or not short-term rentals are taking housing stock out of our inventory, and it really depends on how they're done. So, we've had input about just allowing it generally. Don't worry about it. You don't have very many. It's not going to be a concern. Another control would be to require owner occupancy of the home, to make sure that you don't have both the home and the ADU used in short-term rental mode. Then you really do lose some housing stock, in our opinion. Or to allow it for small ADUs. That came up at your last meeting. We pitched that as an option in the staff report. I'm going to share my recommendation a little bit, because I expect to get public comment on it, and I think, I'm happy to have, I'm happy to be corrected and schooled on this. Generally, I like the grandfathering that we're suggesting to you. If you want to do more, I'm more comfortable, I'm not, I would be very concerned about just allowing it outright. While we're still going to be working on our short-term rental ordinance, you can go back and re-bite this apple at that point in time. It's hard to move a code from a more liberal position to a more conservative position. It's easier to go the other way. So, I'm uncomfortable with number one. If you like two or three, we can also talk about those as well. Would prefer to implement two or three later, but we just share that with you. So, I know there's going to be lots of input. We're eager to hear it. Other things that we changed, really minor bit here, we had input from Commissioner Evans in particular about the objective design standards. His concern was making everything match for a detached unit when you could have a really cool detached unit, and why would you limit that creativity? So, we took that out for the detached unit, left it in for an addition to a house, because that made a lot of sense. Commissioner Evans has communicated with me. He's really pleased with this, and also, just having the height limits be controlled by the heights allowed in the zoning district. We don't need special height limits for ADUs. So those were two things that he appreciated, and of course, he's an architect, so we appreciated his input. Procedural requirements that might, I don't know if they captivated you when you were reading the draft ordinance, but these things are important to staff and Coastal Commission staff. It's nice when our projects don't surprise them, especially if they're in the appeals jurisdiction or we're granting exemptions. And we don't have a standard procedure for notification. We do notify them. We're great at it. We're pretty chummy with them. But we said, oh yeah, we'd be perfectly fine to codify that process. And so you'll see, this actually applies not just to ADUs, but all CDP exemptions to have a process. And we've already prepared our form, and we're already doing it. So, we don't have that many, so it's going to be fine for staff load. And then notifying you, the Planning Commission and City Council, each time there is an administrative coastal development permit granted for an ADU, so that you're aware of it, and you can ask for review of it if you have concerns. But the ordinance is going to be so great that you'll never have any concerns. That's a performance standard for the ordinance. It's how many call-ups you do. This has not changed. The existing ordinance that's on the books today has a 700-square-foot limit in the size of a detached accessory dwelling unit. We're proposing 800 square feet. We talked about this quite a bit. I'm just going to keep clicking. Everyone seemed pretty comfortable with this. We didn't go bigger. I do want to share this. We did not go bigger because the intent is to be affordable by design. And once these things get really big, they're about as big as some of our smaller homes. And we... And we are not sure why we'd want to do that. It seems out of scale. So, and we were allowed to have that discretion. We talked about Measure D last time. We did not change that. We thought you were comfortable with what we had done, counting the units, issuing the certificates, not charging for these certificates, and having a point system that's appropriate for acknowledging ADUs. If we had a competitive situation, they could compete. Occupancy requirements. We also did not change this since we saw you last time. We did have some input on this at both of your study sessions. This, on the code right now, the city requires recordation that either the single-family home or the ADU needs to be owner-occupied. And the sort of, most codes have that. This is sort of part of some old standard ordinance that everybody was using, I think. Yes. But we're seeing a trend to taking that restriction away. And in fact, San Mateo County, when they did their ordinance, they took that out of their code. At your study session in March, we had a lot of input about this that I didn't know it was a big deal, and I pitched it, and we don't think this is a big deal. And people went, no, this is a really big deal. We don't like this restriction. So then we put it in the draft ordinance. We removed this restriction, and we got some input in April that was a little more mixed. We left it alone, but we just want to acknowledge that that's what we, that's really what's been going on in this discussion in this forum here. So that, those were the highlights of what's changed, unless I've missed anything key. The intent for the rest of this evening here, then, is to give the planning commission a chance to ask us any clarifying questions, and then to hold a public hearing. And upon closing that, the planning commission will have time for deliberation, and we're hoping you'll be able to make a decision. And our recommendation is that you would recommend this ordinance for adoption by city council. You're a recommending body for this to the city council. And you can also, if there's modifications you wish to make, you can recommend the ordinance with those modifications. So if it isn't perfect tonight, you can tweak it. So that's all in your purview. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. That was very thorough. Comments or questions from my fellow commissioners?
Yeah, there are certainly questions or issues, but I'd really like to hear from the public before we do that. I mean, there's things that can change my mind. So at least from my standpoint, I'd like to preserve judgment until I hear from other people on this.
Very good.
Yeah, one question, Jill. So you referenced the potential short-term rental ordinance that may be coming back at some point. Can you just describe that a little bit more, maybe what the scope of that might be, what might be included in there, timing, anything along those lines?
Thank you. So we had a study session and discussed some of the key policy points for what might be included in short-term rental ordinance back in March, when we did the ADU session. Some of the key components, because there's a lot of pieces to it, but the very key pieces, and these are the ones that we just saw the coastal commission spend a lot of time discussing for the city of Del Mar's short-term rental ordinance just last Thursday. How many days a year maximum, and a minimum stay? Those two things are really key. And then the other one is those two amounts apply to whether it's hosted, which we're going to be recommending very little limitations for that, versus unhosted. And then that's where most of the cities are looking for some limits. So those are the key bits.
So just so I understand, for the public, so you mentioned that there would be another bite of the apple, so there'd be potential for some sort of discretionary permit or something along those lines, or something that would?
Bite of the apple I was thinking about for your short-term rental ordinance discussion would be if we had more learning about the connection with ADUs and any more concerns because you could, at that same time, make an adjustment to this draft ordinance, and that would be perfectly fine to do. There's a lot of relationships between the two. There would be a review process for each short-term rental, absolutely.
Just to clarify Brian's question, the city is looking to revise the short-term rental regulations more generally, yes?
The city has only policy right now for collecting TOT and for requiring a business license for operators. We don't have any land use zoning code applicable to short-term rentals right now.
So Brian asked a question of, will you plan to put in place some regulations?
Yes.
And do we have a timeframe when we expect that to happen? Within the next year, within the next five years? Can you give us some general guidance? The concern is that there are a number of folks, including Mr. Pond, who are concerned about, well, are we locking ourselves, you know, locking up things in an unnecessary way? When in fact, I think the point you made is if we're a little more restrictive right now, this gives us enough time to get everything lined up, make sure we're not making a big mistake in some way. And then within the next six to 12 months, we'll have a more clean, clarified policy that's consistent with the coastal commission. Can you give me feedback on where that's going?
I think we're looking at about six months on the outside. I think the crafting of the code, because Sarah's amazing at it, is going to go quick. We do need to do a lot more outreach with our operators, and so you're going to see that start to happen after this ADU ordinance. But we would like it done by the end of this calendar year.
How did you settle on the 30-day rental period for the grandfathered units over a six-month period? The reason why I ask that question is if you're renting units generally in the summer, if you rented them last summer and we pass the ordinance now, or the city council approves the ordinance, people would not have rented during their normal rental period.
Sure. So the goal with the 30 days within the previous six months is to ensure that people don't get wind of what we're doing, and then, you know, went to the short-term rental for one night and therefore qualify for the grandfathering provision. That number, 30 days within six months, is just a back-of-the-envelope calculation. We are very welcome to public feedback on that, and if you think it's too restrictive, then we can change that number easily moving forward.
And if we did it for, say, a 12-month period, you don't think that'd make a material difference?
Sure. It makes sense that if there are cyclical rentals in Half Moon Bay, then 12 months might be more appropriate.
Those are the only clarifying questions I have. I'd like to open it up for public comment, unless there are other points you wish to make. Okay. So Matt DeTome, followed by John Crook. Please make sure the green light is on and that you can be heard in the microphone.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Matt DeTome. I am on 307 Grove Street. I just want to say that I'm very impressed tonight with the level of care and thoughtfulness that goes into this amendment. I think it's a great amendment. I'm neighbors with many of the people here in Arlita Park, including Rick and Brian, and Ronaldo and Cynthia, and John, and Tim. Housing is important to us. My mother's a teacher. My sister and brother-in-law, who live on Medsger, are both teachers. Many of our friends are teachers. I have a student at Hatch, or a child at Hatch. Housing is very important to us. For the sake of this community, I think we absolutely need affordable housing. We don't pay our teachers enough, and we need affordable housing. That being said, I'm also an Airbnb operator. It helps me live in this expensive community. I feel like the, we can live concurrently. I feel we, I live on Magnolia now. There's eight, I think, last time I spoke, there's eight or nine people that have ADUs on Magnolia, west of Highway One. None of them today have Airbnbs. Tim has a place on Magnolia. My mom lives on Magnolia. None of those people have ADUs. I don't feel like there's an overwhelming problem with ADUs being used as Airbnbs or short-term rentals. So I'm here to advocate that we might, it might be mistaken to try and regulate short-term rentals via the ADU regulation. I feel like what we need is hundreds more ADUs in this community to make an impact on housing, right? So let's say, I just moved from Grove to Magnolia. My house is a two-bedroom, two-bath house. I need a guest bedroom. It's going to cost me about $200,000 to build an ADU on that piece of land. It's a 10,000-square-foot lot. I have a 1,200-square-foot house on there, no garage. My proposal, I want to build a garage plus an ADU combined. That, and I would not, I can't use that as a guest bedroom if I use that as a long-term rental. I feel, so that's a very selfish reason. My mother is also in a rental unit right next to me, between Tim and I. She is looking to buy. She's retired. For us to be able to afford a house for my mom, I would like her to be able to have an ADU or build an ADU in the back to help her be in this community. That's it.
Thank you, Matt. John Crook, followed by Warren Woolfield.
Well, I don't have much to say. Matt covered most of what I was thinking, but I'll second what Matt mentioned. I live, right now I'm renting on 207 Filbert, and I'm looking to buy a house. I think I could probably get into a two-bedroom, maybe three-bedroom. I've got three kids that are going off to college and coming back, and two sets of aged parents. So slightly different, but similar situation where I need that flexibility to have another room. I don't think I would be able to afford to buy a four-bedroom house or a five-bedroom house or plus. So, and then, but then we, we're faced with the construction class. I'm not sure where it is. Let's say it's between $100,000 and $200,000. I would make that investment easier or easily if I knew I could bring some revenue in off of it through short-term rentals to offset the cost. Now, if I couldn't do that, or I was limited in doing that, I wouldn't make that investment, or it'd be very difficult or very risky. So it's something, I think Matt is right. We need more short-term rentals and ADUs, and that, I think that would help with the, we're stuck right now, right? We need long-term rentals, and we need that to be affordable. But I think it's a supply issue, and I don't think we want to fetter that type of individual investment. Thanks.
Warren Woolfield, followed by Linda Poncini.
Hi. I wanted to make a suggestion. I don't know if it's too late to include in this ordinance, or maybe it needs to be in a future ordinance, but it seems to me that there is something we can do to increase the number of ADUs by a small amount. And that is, I'm thinking of the large number of homes that are being built right now at the end of Terrace Avenue. 65 homes, 3,000 square feet, approximately, you know, close to $2 million each one. Those buyers buying those homes are all coming from over the hill. It's not doing anything to reduce the pressure on housing here in Half Moon Bay. What if in the future, we were to require that any home that is going to be 3,000 feet or more is required to have a built-in ADU? Whether they use it for that or not is besides the point, but at least it'll be there and it'll be legal. And that's my suggestion.
Thank you. Linda Poncini, followed by Mike Farrar.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. I was also very impressed by this ordinance, and it looks like you've done a lot of good work on it. I really appreciated the fact that you explained how the parking was going to work, because my first concern in reading the earlier drafts was what's going to happen with the parking, and that there would be parking all over the street. But it seems like that it is being looked at carefully. I think that the, the one thought that I did like was the option of the owner occupancy of one of the units, either the single-family home or the ADU, that I think that would help for the neighborhoods, that to know that the owner is there and that the unit is being supervised by the person who is actually, who owns the house and is looking after things. And I do think that it's important that the ADUs will actually provide longer-term affordable housing, so that someone can actually live here for years in one of these smaller units. And I think that if there's a way to encourage that, that that's important. That's how you build a community, is for people who will actually be able to live here and stay here and grow up here and have a small unit that they can actually afford to live in. So thank you for that. And I think that it's, I like the idea better of the minimum 30-day rentals, because again, I think that encourages residents of the city who couldn't afford to live here, otherwise to be able to live here. For a shorter-term rental, someone can afford to pay a lot of money per night if they're only here one night or two nights. But if someone wants to actually live here full-time, it's better if their rental unit can be rented for a longer period of time, or that there is a restriction on that. But if it's something that is going to be addressed in other ordinances coming up, then maybe that's a better place to do it. The only other thing I'll say is I thought it was kind of ironic that there was something in the ordinance that says these 800-square-foot ADUs have to prove they're not going to adversely impact public views or vistas to the ocean from Highway One. But what about a hotel in RV Park? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Former chairman and former mayor, Mike Farrar, followed by Paul Gregoriff.
Good evening again, Chair Hernandez and commissioners. First, I think there's a lot of good work here. Let me say that. And I'm particularly pleased to see that you've worked out our unique situation with Measure D, or more properly, Measure A slash D. And so that all of these new units would be counted against Measure D, not restricted by Measure D, counted against Measure D. So you've done a good job on it. I want to express my appreciation for that. But I have to get to the PUDs. My understanding was that this, what we're going through here was an attempt to bring our ordinance up to going through here was an attempt to bring our ordinance up to speed with state law, that we were not specifically charged with going beyond state law, but just up to state law. And so I think that we have now come around to the fact that the state doesn't actually require us to zone PUDs for this, but there's some other part of state law that may require us, or kind of sort of pushes us in that direction. And my problem with that is that there are 19 PUDs, and of the three that were selected, one, Mariucci, I believe is already has permitted requirements for ADUs. So we don't have to get that one. Pacific Ridge, which was mentioned just earlier, that's a settlement. That's a court settlement. And the Coastal Commission and the City Council negotiated from 197 down to 63, and the people on Terrace were still angry because really the development wasn't originally planned to go down Terrace. To this day, they're angry. And I don't think they know that this is happening tonight. I'm busy with things. I don't have to go tell them. But when they find out that we're effectively doubling it, and we are doing that, because they're 10,000-foot lots with 5,000-foot houses on them, so yeah, I mean, these are going to get built there if we put it into this ordinance. And then we get to Ocean Colony, which is, in my storied career, I was once actually president of that association. And what a hornet's nest to get into. It's a private community with narrow streets where you get your car towed if you leave it on the street at night. It's a no-parking place. They have the front gate. They have special entitled arrangements relative to the golf course, even to the hotel, and the restaurants, and the swimming pool, and all of that. It's very complicated out there. And they have their own, as you've mentioned, Architecture Review Committee that, under their CCNRs, has a lot of strength. But there's bills moving in the Assembly. If you want to go up to the, not Assembly, Legislative Bill Finder, and put in accessory dwelling unit and hit search, you get a pageful of bills currently in motion for ADUs, one of which, by the way, I'd like to congratulate you. You picked 800 feet. There's one bill in there that will forbid cities from anything, requiring anything less than 800 feet. Okay. So nice, you know? You're not going to have to make that change. That's a bill by Weiner and Wikowski, and it's already passed the Senate, and it's in the Assembly and almost certainly will get passed. But there's other weird stuff in there, too, that says that private communities can't do all kinds of things, like even require parking. And I think you're going to find that there's stuff that's in motion that's going to stop us from requiring any parking as well. Everybody's in on this in the Legislature. So I beg of you, please, if you feel you can do it, please don't put those three PUDs in this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul? And if anybody else would like to speak, you can fill out a green card later, but I think we've hit just about everybody in the room.
This may sound, excuse me, a little repetitive. Four questions occurred to me as the Commissioners and the staff were talking. And I wanted to ask, and Mike sort of touched on this, is it correct that state law does not override HOA, CCNRs, for example, the ones in Ocean Colony? Because that would make a big difference in Ocean Colony, I believe. Overnight, as Mike touched on, overnight on-street parking is prohibited in Ocean Colony, where I happen to live. And so parking, would not, parking spaces need to be required if that PUD was to be opened up to ADUs? And I wonder, what does our legislation say about ADUs and required setbacks? Does it have any provisions that would allow the construction of ADUs to override existing state setbacks, or does state law? This is a real concern in Ocean Colony as well. And recently, we ran into a funny kink in state law having to do with solar power. Apparently, if you're implementing a solar project, you can override almost everything. Zoning goes out the window. There are no concerns with regard to what you can put on what size lot. So all I have to do, I think, to avoid all this, is just put a solar unit on the roof of my little ADU. I think that's worth looking into. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
I want to speak. Can I, I filled out one of these already?
Please.
Okay. All right. So I wanted to kind of address that parking thing in Miramar. I live in Miramar, and that's going to be one of the places that's excluded from, or included, you have to have additional parking. Now, I'm kind of a little confused about that, because it already seems like we've got a bunch of parking signs in Miramar restricting parking already, and you drive through, especially the neighborhood of Miramar that's behind Villa Uno. And I don't believe there's any on-street parking allowed there anyway, right? And I wonder why. We have a couple of beach parks in that area, and that's where people go and park to get to the beach. The roads are very wide in that neighborhood, and yet there's no on-street parking allowed. And now we're going to make people that have, just by the way, I do have an Airbnb in my home. They share my bathroom. I have a room in my house. But if somebody in that neighborhood wanted to have, and I don't live in that part of Miramar. I live behind the barn in that neighborhood. So, but if somebody wanted to have an, yeah, an ADU in the area behind Villa Uno, now they have to provide a parking spot for it, when there's streets and streets in that neighborhood that doesn't, they can't, they're not even allowed to park on the streets. I remember when somebody new moved into my neighborhood, and they wanted to restrict the parking close to the beach, and because they said that a lot of visitors came and parked in that neighborhood. And they wanted some, no overnight parking, but they also wanted some restrictions that I felt were a little bit unrealistic, that because we live in these neighborhoods, possibly upscale neighborhoods, we don't have to open up our area to other people that are visiting. And I didn't think that was right. So what I think we're going to be doing by excluding or including, or whatever you call it, Miramar, you're all, here's these big houses in Miramar, and they don't allow on-street parking already. And now if you want to have an ADU in that neighborhood, you're going to have to provide off-street parking. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I'd like you to take another look at that, and also ride through those neighborhoods. I ride through that neighborhood all the time, and I don't see an overabundance of parking. What I see is a prejudice of visitors or other people from other neighborhoods being restricted to park in that area. And I don't think that's right. Okay. And then, I just want to make one real quick point about, I think you said that if you were going to do a add-on to a house, it could only be 10% of the size of that house. So that means a house that's 3,000 or 5,000 square feet can have 10% of that added on, but a smaller house, even though it might be in a bigger lot in Miramar especially, is, a $2,000, a 2,000-square-foot house is only going to be allowed a 200-square-foot addition, yet a 4,000 or 5,000-square-foot house could have a 4,000. This doesn't make a lot of sense. Okay. And I could go on and on. And I encourage you to read Tom Pon's letter. Make sure everybody's familiar with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Point of clarification, the comment that was just made, the 10% rule, that applies to, you have to get a CDP if your project, the changes exceed 10% of your existing structure, correct? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Up to 800 square feet.
Up to, yeah. Up to 800 square feet.
That's right. And through the chair, there were quite a few questions that came up, and some of them were particularly legal, and Sarah can field them if you'd like us to do that before your discussion.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Sure. So I will just address the four questions that Paul just raised. So the first question was whether it's correct that state law does not override HOA covenants related to restrictions on accessory dwelling units. Currently, state law does not have any override authority over those covenants. As alluded to, the State Legislature is currently considering an ADU bill that would have such an override. It's passed the Senate, I can't remember which one. It's passed one House of the State Legislature. And so if that passes, then there may be an override for those covenants.
Let me ask, with that question, so basically Ocean Colony, which has CCNRs and the other ones, we don't have to include them, or we have a choice of including them or not?
So our recommendation is to include them, because state law directs cities to allow ADUs on any lots that are zoned for single-family or multifamily use. And since our PUD lots are zoned for single-family or multifamily use, those should be included. And so, for, under the current status quo, we would be allowing them in Ocean Colony per the zoning code, and then private restrictions would restrict them, namely with CCNRs. And so, as a practical matter, for the time being, there would be no ADUs in Ocean Colony, but it would be up to the HOA to enforce that rule. It's not permitted per the city's code.
Okay. Again, just for, to be clear here, if Ocean Colony had in their CCNRs no ADUs, it would be moot to include them. But if they don't have any prohibition, then including them would qualify them under the rules we are currently proposing. Is that correct?
The issue is, I wouldn't say that it's moot. I mean, it's moot as a practical matter, but the issue here is, we can't control what Ocean Colony has in its CCNRs, meaning the city. And so as a matter of state law, we've been directed to zone for ADUs in any lots that are for single-family zones. So that's what this ordinance does.
There was a point of clarification on that. If we have an obligation to come up to standard with state law, we do not have an obligation to make these additional changes to the PUDs. And at some point in the future, if state law changes to address these corner cases, including the HOAs, then we would be obligated to address Ocean Colony in the future.
We believe you currently have the obligation to do so now, because this is a question of what your ordinance says on the books, that there's an obligation to make your ordinance consistent with what state law requires.
Okay, thank you.
I will also turn to the other three questions that were raised. So the next question was about overnight street parking is currently prohibited in Ocean Colony. Again, as we just discussed, this is a sort of non-issue for the time being, because per Ocean Colony's private regulations, there would be no ADU applications, and so parking would not be an issue for the time being. Sure.
We could consider requiring something different for parking in PUDs, in that they are visual resource areas, specifically cited as such in your LCP. And so maybe there's a way to conform the parking regs based on compliance with our coastal act and LCP. And I, we could take a look at that. So that's, that's a little caveat, maybe special to the PUDs.
Let me just restate that. You've got four areas where you're recommending putting in a parking requirement, where currently, what's written in the statute now. One, you're hedging a little bit on, which is the El in Casa Del Mar. Right now, we're not requiring any parking in Ocean Colony if we say that you have to have a PUD. Is that correct? Or did I get, okay, great. Okay. Can you clarify other?
Yes, sure. The third question was about whether state law has any sort of preemptive effects over the city's ability to regulate setbacks. For the most part, the city is permitted to apply its standard setbacks to ADUs, which is what this ordinance does. There are some nuanced requirements related to setbacks for existing garages and setbacks for already existing structures. In those instances, the city has limits on the setbacks that it can impose, and those are included in the draft ordinance. But it is in only those limited areas. This is another place I would caveat that the Legislature is tinkering with this. We may be back with a different requirement in the future. And then the fourth question was about the solar facilities. So I believe you're referencing the Solar Rights Act, which does limit the ability of both local jurisdictions and individuals to limit the ability of folks to build solar facilities. This is a caveat that I have not looked at that law recently. My understanding of it is that it only applies to the solar facilities themselves, so you couldn't combine a solar facility with an ADU to sort of sneak it in under a process by which the city would have no review authority. But if there's further questions about the Solar Rights Act, I could come back with more detailed information.
Very good. Thank you. I had just a procedural question before we get into other things. When we, when we pass, presumably we are going to approve this, this is then going to City Council for final approval? And so what's the timeframe on that process that you would expect?
Depending on what you do tonight, if you recommend moving this to council with a limited number of changes, we would like to turn it around pretty quickly to get it to council as soon as their July 17 meeting. They really want this, and they have to do two readings. So that could be an introduction of the ordinance, and then a second reading could be in August.
Very good. Thank you.
And then it has to go to the Coastal Commission. Okay.
Brian? Any questions? No questions. Les?
Okay, are we going to deliberation here? I mean, that would...
Yeah, we can move to deliberation unless you have other questions for...
No.
All right, so let's move to deliberation.
So, you know, the, I think the explanations that we've gotten, that we've seen in ordinance here that compile, complies with what we're required to do by the state. And I heard issues about the PUDs, but I think, given what I've heard, those need to be included in here or so. My, I guess, primary uncertainty, and I go back and forth, as I heard Jill does, is how to talk about the short-term rentals and ADUs. Now, I also heard that we're going to be, in effect, maybe getting another bite of the apple here. Now, to build an ADU is not going to be cheap. I guess in some cases, it might be cheaper than others. If it's a separate unit, certainly it's going to be costly, given building costs here, $400, $500 square foot. So the question is, how do you pay for these? If you can rent those out at a good price, I think that's one way to do it. But, you know, when it comes to short-term rentals, having the owner move into the short-term... there's all kinds of ways to kind of game this. Um, so, um, putting things in very black and white, I'm not sure is enforceable, uh, here. Uh, so I'm just trying to get other input from my fellow commissioners here, on what we can do here that, in effect, uh, enhances the intent that we've heard from the, uh, people here in the audience and others, to increase the amount of low-cost housing here. But yet, uh, don't come into cross purposes with the short-term rentals. I mean, I don't see us passing this, having all of a sudden two hundred applications, because we haven't had those in the past, and we've had ADU ordinances here. So I think all we're doing here is kind of, uh, taking what we have and trying to comply with, uh, state rules. And I think the big issues that are gonna come up are with the short-term rentals, not necessarily with this here. So I'm just trying to figure out whether the language you have here, which is, uh, eighteen thirty-three, zero-three-zero, under H, I guess, page three twenty-nine of test and two, that says, "The accessory dwelling unit may be rented in full or in part for the purpose of overnight lodging for a term of thirty days or more consecutive days, but it shall not be rented for overnight." Okay, is that better? Okay, so, um, we have a, uh, eighteen thirty-three point zero-three-zero, pardon my horridness. Uh, it says here that "The accessory dwelling unit may be rented in full or in part for the purpose of overnight lodging for a term of thirty or more consecutive days, but shall not be rented for overnight lodging for shorter terms, or sold or otherwise conveyed." So I'm trying to think whether those words here are, uh, sufficient with the intent of what we want to do here. So that's what I'm trying to get input on. And, uh, you know, I, will, will that work for now? And should we wait for the SDR ordinance? Or should we change this any way, shape, or form? That's what-
I, I mean, I think there's two questions, right? So the first one is, if somebody's already following the law, or between now and July seventeenth, is in conformance with the law, so they get themselves right, if they haven't been paying their taxes or following the rules, then those people would be grandfathered in. The city has established that there's about ten people that they're aware of, there's probably more who I expect would come forward and pay their taxes and follow, get in conformance with the rules. Um, but outside of that, I mean, I, I think the obligation we have is to provide long-term housing that's affordable. It's not, and, and we're going through the process of liberalizing and streamlining the ADU process. I'd be very cautious about all of a sudden opening everything up, and given that we've got, um, you know, six months or so, we're probably gonna have a revised ordinance, I, I, I think this is fine. I guess my question to the city attorney is, you've modeled this after best practices from somewhere else, you didn't create this from whole cloth, right? Yeah, so I, I think this is sufficient for that purpose. Um, Brian, I'm curious what your questions are.
No necessary questions. I wanna, you know, I wanna stay, and I guess I just wanna, um, just in the interest of full disclosure, you mentioned, um, I have met with Tim Pond, um, and have talked with him about accessory dwelling unit, um, on my property. Haven't necessarily considered whether that would be for a short-term rental or a long-term rental, and, um, haven't done anything more than that. But, uh, but I, um, in general, I mean, I fully support the concept of providing more housing within the developed footprint of Half Moon Bay. Um, and I think what that really does is, it does provide affordable housing options, and it really has the potential to decrease some of the pressure on some of the other areas that, um, might be more contentious for development for a variety of reasons. Excuse me. I also respect the, some of the comments that have, have been mentioned about, um, short-term rentals, and I'm very mindful of some of the public comment that we heard earlier regarding, um, concerns over large hotel proposals in this community, and, um, and there's, there's a connection there between providing some affordable visitor lodging, um, in our coastal tourist community, which is an interest of the Coastal Commission, I know. Um, and, uh, um, and then, of course, the demand for, for some of the larger hotels. So there's definitely, definitely a connection there. But I, I share the concerns about, I wanna be clear that we're not muddying the water of, right now, we're trying to respond to, um, to state guidance and, and to, to update our codes to be in compliance with the state. Um, we have a plan for addressing short-term rentals, um, and I would be very concerned about doing anything that would, um, try to couch something under the umbrella of an ADU ordinance that would, uh, permit something. I think what has been tried to do here is to try to, um, make something that is, uh, compatible with our current situation, with an eye towards the future, to, to, to do something, um, and address concerns, um, through that process. So, so I, that's, that's where, um, generally where, you know, I stand there.
I think we're largely in, in accord. Um, does anybody have an opinion on the, so two things, one, um, Del Mar, um, to me, the, so there's four areas where we talked about parking, Del Mar was one that was raised. I, I mean, if city staff wants to back away from that requirement, I, I think that's, I mean, fine. I don't know if you guys have any ideas. Would require modification of what's attached here, or we can just leave it as proposed?
My only concern would be sort of lumping out a very specific stretch there and equity concerns in the neighborhood. Um, treating one side of the street differently than, I guess, the other, or that sort of thing. Um, but, uh, that would be, that would be the nature of my concerns. And having not heard from many folks from the Del Mar neighborhood, and, um, you know, Jill, you may have, and have a better sense of what the, what the issue is there, and really what is, um, so I guess to some degree, I'm deferring to staff.
Couple thoughts on this one. Um, what we proposed was, um, both sides of Wave and both sides of Pillar Citos, so it was, it was consistent, um, that, uh, both sides of the street were treated the same because the parking would be, assumably, on, on those streets, both sides. I, what I'm seeing in, um, this was that Casa Del Mar, um, even though you have really nice, short connections to the coastal trail, um, between Pillar Citos and, and the trail, there's a number of little, little routes, especially the one on Wave. You have to go a bit north or a bit south to get to the beach. It's not, um, there, there isn't really a great direct access point there, and that is distinctly different from, um, what we see at Miramar and what we see farther south with, with, uh, uh, the state beach and Poplar. So, I, and that may be why there's less of that, that parking congestion, that, um, I just, I haven't seen as much of it there. So, it's, you know, really up to you, but I have to say, um, we could also, you could add that back in if we're having problems. I don't think you're, this is, this is something that, um, I think really needs to be said in the room. We are intending to support folks in building these units. I'm not expecting to get hundreds, you know, some big-
Right.
Yeah, so, um, I'm, I'm, right now, uh, last year we did three. I'm, I'm hoping that's gonna go way up, um, many times over that, but I, I can't imagine it being over twenty in a year.
Just, just following up on the, the, sort of the coastal access question, I think I know the answer to this, but could you just speak to, I guess, the consistency of some of these areas where you've identified some need for parking for coastal access, and our draft coastal access element of the general plan?
The key coastal access, um, streets that were identified, um, in particular between downtown and the beach were Kelly and Poplar, and you can see there, emphasized on this map. And then, um, other streets such as, uh, Young, uh, Wavecrest, and, um, Venice, and, and really any of, any of those streets that are leading to a state beach parking lot, or the city parking lot in Poplar are particularly called out. Um, Miramontes to the south also leads to a public parking lot, so it's another access point. Um, there are no streets in Casa Del Mar that were specifically designated for coastal access. Casa Del Mar does not have any permit parking, um, as far as I know. There is permit parking, um, we heard about that in, in Miramar, as well as on Kelly, and so that is sort of a, a symptom of, of the issue with, um, beach parking.
You know, uh, since we haven't had a, uh, huge flow of permits, and I don't think we're gonna have a huge increase just because we passed this, um, are we kind of putting the cart before the horse, or do you think we have to do this because in five years there, there might be an issue? I mean, uh, we're talking about Casa Del Mar, Alcestel Rain, and the others. So do we need to include all of these at this point? I'm just trying to ask the question.
I, I think so, because we gotta comply with state law. So, um, so the, the, the interpretation is it's a visual resource and it's a beach access point. I mean, it's a pretty easy argument to make that, I mean, I, I park in that area all the time when visiting friends, and, yeah, maybe there's not a lot of congestion, but it's definitely a beach access area. Um, maybe the locals use it, so I'd be inclined to keep it included for now, just because of the sort of local use pattern, if you're, um, you know, there are a lot of folks using it. I, I mean, we, we should include the parking in the other three areas, this one in Casa Del Mar, I'd be, you know, given that it is a beach access street, in my experience, I'd just be inclined to keep it as well. Okay. The only other thing I had was on the, the PUDs. It seems like, uh, the city's interpret-
It's an unusual state of affairs when somebody's asking me to speak up, um, but yes, I, I'll be happy to do so. Um, the concern I have about the, the PUDs, you know, it is your interpretation, as you said, that, um, that we need to address the PUDs to be in conformance with state law. So I don't think there's a lot of wiggle room there. Brian, I don't know if you have any opinions. I would concur with Steph.
Okay, um, I don't, I don't think I have anything else.
You ready to entertain a motion? Oh, wait, we don't, are we, we're not making a motion this evening, or we can?
We are.
Okay. Looking through. So, I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution recommending approval of the draft ordinance regulating accessory dwelling units to the city council. Do any read in this hole?
You don't have to. And that, and that will include, yeah, actually, as, as written, I think we- Les? Did we miss anything?
So-
Second?
Yeah, yeah. I didn't hear it in full, but I, I'll second whatever you said.
So, uh, can we get a, uh, roll call vote, please, for PDP eighteen oh-two-seven?
Yes. Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holt?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes. Excellent. Motion passes three-oh. This item's closed. Um, closing in on nine-thirty here, uh, we have last item, are there any communications?
A couple quick ones. First of all, Steph, thanks you. You've met about this four times, and we greatly appreciate your thoughtful work on this. Um, is everybody using, able to use your email now? We got you some city emails, and if, I just wanna check in with you on that.
So I'm gonna need a member of, I mean, I can use it on my computer, but I use my mobile device, and I can't get the mobile email to work on my-
Okay.
I've had the same trouble.
Are you too?
Actually, I've had trouble just, yeah, just setting up the-
Okay.
I need help.
Okay. We'll find, are you a helper, Joe, or, okay? Okay. We'll find a helper.
We could maybe have them come to one of the planning commission meetings in advance, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, we can do that. Okay, great. Thank you.
So no, it hasn't worked.
Agenda forecast, uh, June twenty-sixth, we have noticed for five-seventy-five Philbert Street, a new single-family home on a substandard lot with a parking exception. Um, I think the agenda, other than that, is light, so it might give us an opportunity to come back and talk about small lot infill after you see that item, because you've now, um, been working on these quite a bit, and it's, um, pretty informative for us. In July, we would like to, um, bring, uh, local coastal program chapters to you that have been through the, uh, ad hoc committee, and, um, we're getting, uh, lots of, lots of work back through the committee, and we, we will be prepared to do that. Uh, lots of community development director items coming up. There's an admin approval scheduled for, um, this is all June twenty-seventh, um, for a deck proposed at eight-seventeen Railroad Avenue, um, three hearing items, uh, Seacrest School landscaping project, four-seventeen Chesterfield, a new house, and on Metzger, um, a new house for a care home. In July, um, we'll have a hearing, uh, for an addition, uh, for three-ninety-three St. Andrews. It's in the appeals jurisdiction, so we need to have a hearing. And then, uh, just a couple quick things that have happened with city council recently, and John Doughty alluded to this, um, the bike ped master plan and, um, parks master plan award of contract for SEQA, uh, coverage was awarded last week. We're kicking that off and trying to move very quickly. You will see that come back through, on, your, your purview is to review that SEQA document, which, um, and, and also make any final, um, uh, feedback that you have on, on those master plans. The parks master plan will come first. We're trying to have it ready for grants that could become available very soon, um, relative to, um, Vice Chair Holt's, uh, item of, of the approval of that, that great big, um, bond measure. Um, and then, we are going to see council on July seventeenth for, to talk about some, uh, downtown opportunities that we've looked at, um, which includes some other kinds of code amendments, so we'll, we'll meet with them first, see what their direction is. Um, so it's a, it's a year of policy and coding, um, in the background. And also, by the way, I forgot, um, June fifth, uh, council also approved, um, a larger scope of work for Huffman Broadway, who is working on the, um, ESHA mapping for the local coastal program. The work they've done so far in the mapping uncovered a need to do some more work, and that happens sometimes when, when your map is so out of date. So, we were very grateful to council for continuing to support, um, that part of our planning effort, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Um, do you have a plan for, um, commission meetings that might not be held due to staff vacation schedules or planning commissioner vacation schedules yet?
We would be happy to do that with you. If you would like to, um, pick a July meeting and an August meeting that you would prefer, that, you know, maybe several of you are traveling, uh, what council has done, um, council will be, um, meeting for their second July meeting and their second August meeting, and not, uh, the first July or August meeting. So that, that's how they're going to reduce their schedule over the summer. I can send you an email tomorrow, I think that'd be easiest, and then you can chime in if there's a, a date that you just can't make, and if we see a cluster of vacations, we'll, we'll plan- can't make, and if we see a cluster of vacations, we'll, we'll plan around that. Okay?
Just, yeah, sure. So, I'll just put mine on. July 10th, I am going to be out of country and on vacation in a place that is unlikely to have any type of access.
Good for you.
June 26th, I will be traveling, but I would like to attend remotely.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm going to be in Atlanta or Houston, but I will be in one of those two places, and I'll...
You'll coordinate with Joe, and so we can get the agenda right. Yep.
And then, yeah, those are the two that I know about.
Okay. Thank you.
And I've already passed along, I will be out June 26th.
Okay. That's right. I understand that Commissioner Benjamin will be back for that meeting, and so I, we'll, we'll double-check and, and confirm our quorum, but I, I think we're okay if we have you, Commissioner Demone, and, yes.
Because while we have last planning, commission, communications, I'd like to recognize one of our people in the audience, Linda Ponsini, who was on this commission for at least 10 years. Like to see people like that come back, so just good seeing you. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. Can I get a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.